Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Little up. She likes it. Okay. Uh, roll call and declarations of conflicts of interest.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here and none.
Councilmember Bixel?
Here and none.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Here and none.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here and none.
Mayor Blue Black?
Here and none. All right, approval of agenda is posted or amended.
So moved.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second, will you call the roll please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes, passes five zero, thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, item five A, appointment of member of Stanislaus Economic Development, uh, EDEC meeting. Uh, we will, uh, I'm suggesting that it be, um, Anthony Sims, Director, and then, uh, Councilmember Phillips will be the alternate.
Smooth to approve.
Second.
Now a motion in a second, will you call the roll please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor? Blue Black?
Yes. Five zero. Okay. Director Sims? Congratulations, you're now the EDEC member, and it's your turn buddy, you're up.
Good evening Mayor, Council, uh, city staff and members of the public, I'm Anthony Sims, the Economic Development Director for the city of Turlock. Tonight, I'll be providing a brief presentation on some of the projects that the Economic Development Team has been working on this year. Before we get into the projects, I'll give a brief, uh, overview of some of the activities that, that go on within economic development over the course of the year. I'll also provide you an update on some new businesses coming to town, why businesses come to Turlock, and then I'll go over the department, the projects as well. So, in economic development, it's important to know the statistics of your community, we're always highlighting and selling the community, trying to bring businesses to the city of Turlock, so it's important to know some key statistics whenever you're talking to commercial real estate brokers, or franchises, or industrial manufacturing companies, so Turlock population, seventy-two thousand to seventy-four thousand, but more importantly, within twenty mile radius, we have five hundred thousand population. We have a skilled workforce with CSU Stanislaus, uh, TUSD, Turlock Unified School District, Career Technical Education, partners with MJC, Bay Valley Tech. We have consumer shopping as well, so a power retail center is in our community, Mona Vista Crossings, which is number four in California, number eight in the US. We have major employers in the city of Turlock, we have a great industrial manufacturing district, district in the WISP, the West Side Industrial Specific Plan, uh, home to Amazon, Blue Diamond, Divert, and many other businesses. We also have over ten hotels in the city of Turlock, so we have a healthy TOT tax coming in, and we meet with our hoteliers quarterly, and their average occupancy rate is about eighty-five to eighty-nine percent ongoing. Really what helps that is we have Padretti Sports Park, so we have a great Parks and Rec team that run Padretti Sports Park, hosting over thirty-five annual tournaments each year, bringing people from out of the state into the Turlock, discovering Turlock, shopping in Turlock. Uh, we're also home to the annual Stanislaus County Fair each July, so close to two hundred thousand people come into Turlock each July. Great vibrant historic downtown Turlock, another reason people come to Turlock. And then logistics too, we have Highway ninety-nine, we're close to five, access to rail, and ninety miles of the Bay Area. So this is all key information that helps us bring business to Turlock and why businesses want to be in Turlock. So some of the pillars of economic development that we'll briefly go over is business retention and expansion, we refer to it as BRE. We also go over business attraction, workforce development, talent development, some other areas of economic development that we focus on is supporting entrepreneurs and business startups, marketing, and then some community development efforts as well. Uh, jumping into the first pillar of economic development, we focus on business retention and expansion. Uh, within this area, you want to meet with your current business in your community, so our goal is to meet with over a hundred businesses each year. We want to meet with major employers, we want to meet with major top sales tax producers, and we want to meet with small businesses too. Our goal is to strengthen the relationship between the city and our local businesses, so we can share information on available resources, um, find opportunities, uh, where a business may be expanding, we want to make sure if they expand, they stay in Turlock, they expand in Turlock, we don't want to lose them to another community. Uh, also retaining existing businesses, so when we meet with them, we find out what are the challenges they may be, they may be facing uh, now or in the near future, and then try to get those resources to them so they can get ahead of that. But, well, most importantly, we want to be business friendly. So, within business retention and expansion, we have a business visitation program, uh, and that's the goal, to meet over a hundred businesses each year. Currently, we've met with about a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty businesses this year already. Uh, we try to get them exposure, uh, more than anything, we're a connector, so we connect them to the Turlock Chamber, we connect them to the Latino Chamber, the Small Business Administration, the Small Business Development Center. Some of them may have, may need recruiting assistance, so we'll connect them with Stan State, uh, or Workforce Development, the EDD, or Bay Valley Tech. Um, they may have questions about permitting, so we'd connect them with our team here in Development Services. Uh, and then we're also always marketing our business community while trying to attract consumers to Turlock. Some of the resources that we offer our businesses is, we have no cost business workshops. Our goal is to hope, is to host twelve or more annually, these are all free for them to attend, and it's not just Turlock businesses will attend, businesses from all over the region will come, we have some businesses from Tracy that comes. Uh, they get impressed that Turlock is providing these resources, and it could be an opportunity for them to come do business in Turlock in the future. We also host an annual Turlock Job Fair each November. This last one, we had fifty-five employers and over two hundred and forty job seekers, so it's a great opportunity to connect our local businesses with job seekers, so that's recruiting assistance. We also, um, have been fortunate for Council to approve a, a, a safety program for businesses, FUSIS, the Turlock Security Enhance, Enhancement Pilot Program, that's a partnership with Turlock Police Department to provide, uh, business, uh, more safety for businesses and consumers, we'll talk about that in a little bit. And then we also get media coverage too, so we have connections with Good Day Sacramento and some of the other news outlets, so whenever they come to town, they'll try and look for some businesses to meet with, so here's an example of Rise and Brew on Good Day Sacramento. Uh, however, there is a downside to, to business retention and expansion, so recently, in January, we are alerted that Foster Farms is going to be laying off five hundred and nineteen employees, this is one of the bad parts of economic development, you don't want this to happen. Uh, so, anytime something like hap, something like this happens, it's a major economic impact to the community, so it's a loss of jobs, there's products not being produced in these facilities. Uh, you know, then there's logistics that used to go in and out of the facilities, there's lots of areas that are impacted. So anytime something happens like this, Stanislaus County Workforce Development Department, they deploy a rapid response team, so they are actively working with those, and those employees that are going to be displaced, but I just wanted to show an example of the downside of business retention. And this is a business that we met with every year for the past couple of years too, but we weren't alerted that there was a challenge. So we also support entrepreneurs and startups, so creating these, offering these free business workshop is an opportunity for entrepreneur, or a startup, maybe a college student, or somebody from another community. They come, they get access to these business workshops, uh, there's different topics, so we've had branding your business, accounting strategies, how to get your business on the news, uh, cybersecurity for businesses, uh, because you never know what entrepreneur or startup may have that business idea, where maybe they'll have twenty employees or fifty employees. But it's a way to, to court them and show them that Turlock is business friendly, uh, so we want to support entrepreneurs and startup communities. So one of my favorite parts of economic development is business attraction. So this is the, the thrill of the hunt, trying to find a manufacturing company or that trending retailer to come to your community. But you don't just go after any business, you want to find the right fit for your, for your community. So you want to recruit companies that provide good paying jobs, you want to recruit franchises and retailers that your community leaves to go visit. You want to recruit retailers and franchises and services that bring outside dollars to our community. So, some example here, Chick-fil-A, Topgolf, Sprouts, these are all businesses that everybody wants in their community. Um, here's a picture of, uh, in the WISP, uh, shows some good parcels there from the sky. Uh, some resources that we use in business attraction is that we'll use LinkedIn, uh, to contact decision makers at key companies, create that relationship, set up a discovery call, get them information on Turlock, and continue to court them, it's a sales process. Uh, we also use CoStar and LoopNet, so these are commercial site websites, so they'll tell you if, if something's for sale or for lease, and the site specifics. Uh, we use data analytics, so we'll get workforce data from Stanislaus Workforce Development, and we'll get that information as we're courting, uh, a company that we want to come here. And then we'll do social media posts about our community, continue to highlight our community, that way maybe some business says, we're in expansion mode, we're not sure where we want to go, but what's going on in Turlock, I keep hearing about all these new businesses and all these good events that are going on. So that's why we'll use social media for that, and it's just a lot of follow-up, just phone calls, emails, conference calls, just following up. Uh, this is, this is an example of a, of a site selector software, so this is Buckston, so this is something we actually used a couple of years ago. So you can pick the franchise that you want, and you can pick a location and area that you might want it to be in, and it will tell you how you rate. So we put in Chick-fil-A in here a couple of years ago, uh, Countryside West Tuolumne, and it performed really well. Uh, some of the metrics, in this next slide here, it shows the site that you put in at the top, and then it will show you about ten or so other existing Chick-fil-A sites and how your community rates. So dark green bar is the best, light green bar is like medium, so we have two of these three categories in dark green, so we're, we have the ideal customer account, count, the ideal customer ratio, and good household similarity. So this is something that we use throughout that process while we're trying to recruit Chick-fil-A and work with the developer. And since then, uh, the site here that we're talking about Chick-fil-A, the Turlock Marketplace Development, so it's going to be on the corner of West Tuolumne and Countryside, so this was a a good example to be able to share with everybody, see it come to fruition. And then as it happened, we were able to announce it, uh, whenever the permit process, uh, announced the project, so we're able to advertise this, and then really, it's a good opportunity right now in business attraction, while this is happening, this development, you want to be able to highlight this, because this is the opportune time to tr, trying to attract the Trader Joes, the Topgolf, the Cabela's, the businesses that our, our communities wants, because there's still space available for them. So this is an exciting time, um, if anybody caught on in November, we, we played with Turkey Trot a little bit, we had Turkey Tom race Betsy Cow, so we're having a little fun with the Chick-fil-A. Uh, but the biggest, uh, thing, the biggest advantage for Turlock is we, we are investment ready, so when you're attracting companies to your community, you want to have a skilled workforce, you want to have the, the great, the, the nice consumer data, but you need other infrastructure improvements too, so we're constantly working on roads projects. Uh, skill, we have a skilled workforce, uh, Stan State, Turlock Transit, so we have transportation, SRWA, Stanislaus Regional Water Authority, providing more water capacity. We see more EV charging stations come up, the WISP, the West Side Industrial Specific Plan, it's carved out for industrial manufacturer users. Our Development Services can help you out with site location services, we have free pre-development meetings, our quarterly sales tax, we've had positive numbers thirteen out of the last fifteen quarters. No other city in our county has had that, so things are going good in Turlock, we're very fortunate. And then the bright development will provide more housing too, so Turlock really is investment ready for new businesses to come here. So if you don't have product, you know, the land, skilled workforce, then it's hard to get a project to come. So just talking briefly, I'll come over a couple of slides here, talking about how we're, we have infrastructure, roads projects. Twenty twenty-three, Fifteen Streets, five point nine miles, twenty twenty-four, five point four miles, twenty twenty-six, Gear Road, it's going to be two point six miles of roads improvements. Again, in twenty twenty-six is another twelve point eight miles of roads, and then in twenty twenty-six, Golden State will have one point one miles in roads. So here's twenty twenty-three, the green is the Fifteen Streets, and you've seen these slides before. Uh, twenty twenty-four, the blue is the streets, five point four miles, twenty twenty-six, Gear Road, the red line. Another, the orange streets in this slide is twelve point eight miles. And then Golden State, one point one miles. And then talking a little bit about the SRWA, so we're fortunate, the Stanislaus Regional Water Authority provides more water capacity for users. So they actually received a Design Built Institute of America Award. So this is all important, because when businesses look for a site, they're looking for water capacity, utilities, logistics, skilled workforce, a population. So Turlock is fortunate, we have a lot of these assets. This is an example of a business attraction, uh, strategy that we did, uh, we had some real estate brokers come to Turlock in October. Uh, we gave them an update on developing in-service, we took them on a tour of the city, down Gear Road, Mona Vista, through the WISP, and then back to City Hall. So this is an example of trying to showcase some sites and the opportunity for Turlock. And so the process for economic development of business attraction is, you want to contact the site selectors, the commercial real estate brokers, the franchises, the manufacturers. You want to share with them the, the statistics, you can even send them some sites. So again, we tell them about the five hundred thousand population within twenty miles, power retail center, educated skilled workforce, and then it's just follow-up, follow-up. And again, what businesses look for, they look for water capacity, good utility rates, logistics, so they want to be near freeway, rail, supply partners, have a skilled workforce, so they can fill their jobs, and then consumers' rooftops, population. And again, the WISP is a great site for industrial manufacturers. So just quickly here, uh, some new businesses that opened up in the last six months, Home Goods, Homeless Republic, Corn Korean Dogs, Jamba Drive, Jamba with a Drive-Thru on West Main. Uh, Divert Inc., it's in the WISPs, I think they have about two hundred jobs there. Uh, Newtown Cafe, Gray's Tavern in downtown, Happy Claw Arcade, Cajun Bento by the College, a new grocery outlet just opened up a couple of weeks ago. And then coming soon, we have Protein House, Burlington, uh, Zalata, it's, it's a fast casual, healthy choice restaurant. Curl Fitness is coming into the old Gear, the old In Shape on Gear Road. Play Laugh Always Young, a, a children type, um, business, they have trampolines and places you can play. Staybridge, an eighty-eight room hotel on Sun Valley Court near Hobby Lobby, Chick-fil-A. And then here's a, a banquet hall, that's going to be coming soon on West Main. So, and it's also going to have a five-story, hundred and twenty-room Fairfield Hotel. Um, and then, this next pillar of economic development is workforce development, talent development, if you don't have talent or the workforce, it's hard to get companies to come here. So with Stan State being in our community, it's very helpful, and then we have other regional partners available to us too, MJC, Bay Valley Tech, uh, Volt, TUSD. Here's some of the events that we do in economic development, so we have the Job Fair, Annual Turlock Business Conference, community workshops, we attend ribbon cuttings, business anniversaries, uh, and then we even went to the Tulare Ag Expo a couple of weeks ago, that has a hundred thousand visitors each February. Uh, and some other activities that we focus on economic development is just marketing, going to mixers, being aware of trending initiatives such as EV charging, digital billboards, ag tech jobs, uh, emerging industries. And then touching briefly on the current projects that we have in our department, so we have the Business Visitation Program, our goal is a hundred business visits annually. We're about a hundred and sixty meetings currently for the year. Business workshops, our goal is twelve to fifteen annually, we've had four completed so far. The City of Turlock Small Business Development and Assistance Program, this is a program for Turlock businesses to get funding for social media ads, to attract consumers to Turlock. We have about sixty businesses in the program, we have room for around thirty-four more. Uh, fifty-three of these sixty businesses have received a first check of seventeen fifty, each business is eligible for thirty-five hundred dollars in funding. Uh, it comes in two tranches, first check is seventeen fifty, the second is seventeen fifty, so fifty-three of these sixty have received the first check. About seven, close seven to close to ten have received the second check, so that's moving along. We have the Annual Job Fair, that was, uh, again in November, I touched on that earlier. We're currently working on the Economic Development Strategic Plan Update, that's currently in process, that should be completed in July twenty twenty-five. And then we have the FUSIS Program that I talked about earlier, the, the city will fund the first year for up to fifty-nine businesses. This works with external cameras, so if any crime-related incident happens, it allows Turlock Police Department to respond quicker, so it's great for public safety, safety for businesses, safety for consumers. We have funding for up to fifty-nine businesses, we have ten currently participating, and we're continuing to do outreach, and we're picking up some momentum currently. We're also working on an annual business survey that will be coming out soon, we're, uh, finalizing the questions. And then business attraction efforts, that never stops, that's something that we, we do every year, so we're currently working with the Turlock Marketplace to help them recruit new, uh, more businesses for their development. And then the Sports Center Project is ongoing, I have a couple of slides for the Turlock Sports Center. This is a project that's been going on for a couple of years, so we want to have a facility in Turlock that will provide indoor basketball, indoor volleyball, uh, for pickup, rec leagues, youth leagues, travel teams, AAU teams, AE, AAU tournaments on the weekends, travel ball, same thing for indoor volleyball, indoor-outdoor soccer. What we've done so far is that we've had a feasibility study done, it showed that there'd be an increase in, uh, TOT tax from the hotels, more people staying in the hotels. Uh, this feasibility study was done in twenty twenty-two, it showed that Turlock would be an optimal site for this type of project, there'd be an increase in sales tax revenue. Uh, it'd be an increase of seven hundred and fifty thousand unique visitors to Turlock over the year. Uh, it would complement other businesses and organizations, it'd provide more recreational opportunities to our youth and our adults. Um, so our next steps is, we're trying to identify a funding source for land acquisition, uh, identify potential operators, as well as, uh, future, as well as other investors as well. So why businesses come to Turlock, why do we continue to see an increase in business activity? Uh, really, I think we have the winning formula, we have large employers, there's expansions going on, uh, groundbreaking events, we have a diverse shopping district, many of them. Vibrant downtown, we have strong community partners in the fair, Turlock Sports Park, Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association, we have Stanislaus County Fair, Stan State, so we have that synergy that's always going on, so. And then if you want to follow us, we have our mobile app here, I encourage you to download it, it's free to download, you can stay up to date on all Turlock events, and then here's our social media accounts here. And I'm available for any questions, if there may be any, sorry, a lot of information, but.
Questions for the Director? Thank you so much. Got a lot going on.
All right.
Chick-fil-A, okay. Director, show on. Tell us in, with a wand, we're going to have new software and everything's going to be perfect, right?
Uh, I'd love for that magic to happen, yes. I just need that wand, but yeah, we're working on that. So yeah, good evening Mayor, members of Council, members of the public, uh, before you tonight, I have a briefing on an initiative we have to modernize our permitting and licensing processes, uh, with the implementation of new technology to hopefully, uh, improve this overall process. So I'd just begin with some of our goals around this initiative. Our ultimate goal would be to provide a centralized online platform for permitting and licensing. Right now, there's a lot of segmentation across our different permits, uh, with departments and the approval processes that multiple departments have to interact with. Um, another goal is to enhance our customer experience with a, a service that's, can be digital. We'd like to move to a platform where you can create an account and submit an application for your permit you're interested in. The next goal would be to increase efficiency with workflows built in, um, notifications to the staff and applicants, uh, as well as approval processes, so that things are approved accordingly as they go through. Uh, another goal would be to reduce our processing time, uh, with the development of workflows, we're looking to enhance, uh, the overall time it takes to process permits, some are long, some are short. Um, next would be to improve transparency to our applicants, uh, this would allow our applicants to create an account, submit an application, and then know exactly where they're at in the process, therefore, they're not having to uh, reach out to multiple departments or people throughout the city to kind of find out where they're at. And next would be, uh, stronger interdepartmental collaboration, um, since certain permits do touch multiple departments and, uh, subject matter experts within those departments, it will enable, uh, from a top level to kind of see where those are at, and allow those departments to work hopefully more efficiently within the system. And then lastly, um, having a system that'll provide analytics, reporting, uh, benchmarks as to where you can start with a baseline and grow from, uh, as well as stronger digital record-keeping practices. So at this time, our current challenges is we're limited, uh, with certain submission options, uh, we do have some digital, we have some over the counter, we have PDF printouts that have to be hit, like, filled out by pen and submitted. Um, I'm sure some of those are also, uh, transcribed into, uh, through a computer and emailed, um, and we have some website forms, um, all of which these are just submitted and then they kind of go into the system, uh, without, from what I'm aware of, a lot of notification of where, where they're at, so our intention is to provide that transparency of it. So, like in the next, yeah, limited transparency and progress tracking. Um, some of the processes are, can be meant manual and inefficient, uh, they might slow things down. Um, one of the things is, you know, if you fill out a, a paper-based permit, it still has to be keyed into another system by a staff member for us to record and create a record of, so we lack that integration. And oftentimes, if, if these challenges slow things down, we, we may have dissatisfied customers, so that's why we're looking at software. So at this time, we are looking at a enterprise permitting and licensing software. Um, I've collaborated with departments since I've started with the city regarding this initiative, uh, primarily with Development Services, with previous directors and the current leadership, and they've had a strong interest in, and they've budgeted for, uh, permitting and licensing software to hopefully improve their building and planning processes. Right now, we're looking at a company called Tyler Technologies, um, they offer a cooperatively bid contract. One of the things we selected this company for was their customer experience, they have an elegant design, um, they're able to take decades of historical records, uh, with permits, and they'll migrate them into a new system at no cost, only because it's a like-for-like, we currently use a Tyler Technologies product, they have database experts. If we move to a new one, they also have experts that know both like-for-like systems and can bring those in. Um, and then this should integrate with our city ERP system, which I had just mentioned, and we're also looking at implementing a new payment processor, which is also from Tyler, so when you go to pay for your permit or license, it will redirect you to an online platform to pay for that, and we can ingest that payment info into our current system. So yeah, one of the things we did is we like, assessed some of the top permitting and licensing companies for their services, uh, we compared the experience, the design and implementation cost, um, ultimately, due to the integration services, we felt that Tyler would be the, the ideal solution that would increase our workflows, uh, on both ends. And that's it, is there any questions for me?
Oh yeah. Questions?
Uh, perhaps this question would be better suited when this comes before the Council to decide, but I, I would just like to put a plug in there that, you know, while moving to a new system that has increased capabilities is, is really exciting, and you mentioned in there that it's going to give us, you know, a baseline. I, I think it would also be valuable information to kind of know what's happening now, like, I, I think we all, everybody has a sense of it's not good enough, but how do we quantify what better looks like, so you know, in talking with staff, I sort of understand that those manual things are hard to figure out of what is, where is the bottleneck, and how long does it take, but I, I really think it would be valuable for, when we look back in three years after we've been using this, to know, did we make a, make it change, or did it just feel like it got better? I want to, I want to have some numbers to go with that.
Yeah, can I make a comment on that?
Please.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you there, um, one of the big parts is, we, we have a statement of work with a full project scope with multiple phases, and a few of the biggest ones have to do with the collabor, or, excuse me, the data conversion, which is a lengthy process, but the next one's process, uh, refinement and process development, which means we need to really work with the staff internally to understand what the current processes is, are, and how many steps there are along the way, and what we can hopefully cut out or optimize to increase that workflow, because that will give us the baseline and then help us develop new processes that should be, you know, a few, hopefully a few more, or a few less steps, uh, that will increase efficiency.
And, and with that, you know, that's, getting the software is step one of probably five hundred, right? So how long, how long does the rollout of this take?
So, um, I, I wanted to include that, yeah, so the, the rollout, this, what we're looking at is a full-fledged enterprise system, um, which would encompass, we have about thirty different unique permits across the city, across different departments. And some of them are just a fillable form that someone receives, and they properly collect the payment, and then they process the permit. My department doesn't touch any of those, but we house the website that provides those, and we did a comprehensive inventory of what's there. So if we're going to be intaking these, some of the bigger permits that require a lot of oversight and approvals, uh, really require that process planning of like, we need to know exactly how we're doing things, and we need to really refine how we can do it better, and, and um, identify what the, the bottlenecks and things might already be, and how we can streamline those. So when I ta, spoke with the company, they, they gave me a twelve to eighteen month, uh, turnaround in full, from project initiation to close out. Um, and that would be going live, my hope would we, we would begin starting to go live with larger permits that take the longest, and then bring in the smaller ones that probably won't take as much process refinement. But, uh, some of the, the most demanding ones, I believe we need to really dial in. Yeah, you're welcome.
I, I would guess, I mean, obviously we're a, I would say a medium-sized city in California, or, um, I I would guess, I mean, obviously, we're, I would say, a medium-sized city in California. Other cities have the same problems that we do. And I I would hope that a company like this could bring ideas that maybe how this other communities are doing and this is working well, rather than having to reinvent the wheel for just here. I mean, it seems like some cost savings there, right? You know it works in other places and here's processes that you can implement. Is that being considered also?
Oh, yeah. I I would, while we do the project implementation, I'm, what I'll be leveraging would be the subject matter experts with the company telling us how they've done other implementations. I mean, we're we're gonna be one of many customers. But at the same time as we're assessing this, we're comparing what other cities have, what platforms they have. I'm looking more at the software, but we're also looking at the processes. And one of those things would be kind of comparing to what other cities are doing and then collecting feedback. As I was assessing this specific product, I was getting feedback from staff to reach out, some of our neighboring cities that use this product are Clovis and Rancho Cordova. And I I had actually, engineering had said, oh, yeah, like, we we work with a firm out of Clovis, you know, reach out to this person and ask what their thoughts and feedback. And I had, you know, one source of positive feedback there. And then I've talked with other professionals, more on the IT side of their experience with the migration, and they they've had positive experiences. But it would be really to optimize the the overall, like, citizen experience and ensure we're we're checking all the boxes that we really need to and maybe not adding more than we need to. And then find ways to to enhance it where, you know, maybe it can auto-fill your information if we already have it. You know, if we have record of your address or your parcel, it will kind of pre-populate that info and streamline that process.
So knowing that our department directors are our subject matter experts, shouldn't we just, I mean, we're very antiquated in what we have, no disrespect. We just haven't upgraded forever. So shouldn't we have each of the directors have a group, a listing of complaints that the customers have in regard to whatever processes we're using now so that we have it at the forefront as opposed to trying to fix it afterwards and them saying, hey, you bought it, it's yours. And, you know, as soon as you drove it off the lot, it was no longer. I mean, I I would want us to have more understanding, each of them, what they're looking for, where the problems are. For me personally, with the business license, can we put more requirements so that we can actually communicate with our businesses on a regular basis? And nobody has to come in with a check because people don't carry checks anymore. I mean, these things are like so far gone, but probably not many cities have this. So saying, okay, Tyler, here, this is what we, you know, just we'll take whatever you get. We should have that before we get to them so that we're ahead of the game once they start the the ball rolling.
Sure. Yeah, I would collect that information. I think it's a good, at this time, I don't have that. I I've just heard of.
But it's not yours, it's theirs.
But well, we would work with the staff and say, hey, what are the what are the top challenges, if you can list them with the process complaints that you've received?
Perfect.
And and what are they stating? And then bringing that to the vendor, you know, prior to approval and implementation.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're looking forward to getting it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is time for public participation. It is for somebody to speak in regard to a subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And you have three minutes. And it's it's an item on the agenda. I will ask you to defer your comments to that comes up. But three minutes at both spots. I have no cards. Who would like to speak? And you thought you were late.
I'm never late, especially when you guys are waiting for me.
We were.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Farkas. I have the honor and privilege of serving as the field representative for Assemblyman Juan Alanise. And to keep things brief, we've really been hitting the ground running this year. I think I let you guys know in a previous meeting that the number of bills that we are allowed to introduce per session has been capped at 35, previously 50, which is positive. We have, the deadline for those introductions was on Friday, and we've submitted 18 bills. So we're hitting right at that 50% mark so that we we've got enough wiggle room going into next year because those sessions last two years each. We're hitting a wide range of topics, obviously, public safety being a major factor, dealing with a lot of different issues. I think it was actually in Turlock, but Chief Headin talking about some copper wiring being stolen out of EV chargers here in the city of Turlock. Maybe not here, but I know that was a discussion we had. One of the bills that we're introducing would provide grants to cities to deal with that issue, copper wiring being sold out, stolen out of public EV chargers. And I think the most consequential for this city, write this one down if you're listening, Assembly Bill 767. So I'm sure many of you have been following the news, if you're in this building, regarding Kevin Gray and his potential release into the city of Turlock here. And the California Supreme Court deciding that a homeschool is not considered a institution of learning here in the state of California. There is a petition sent over and they made sided with that petition, the Supreme Court did, without a written opinion as to why they decided to. And so when things like that happen, the only way we can fix them is to change the law. So Assembly Bill 767 that will clarify that homeschools are public institutions of learning for the purposes of placing an SVP in a specific community. Dealing with other issues too, some human services issues, as well as agriculture and education. If you've got any questions, feel free to contact our office. Thank you.
Just real quick, I just want to make sure that anybody's listening, that it's actually not in the city of Turlock, it's in the county.
Right, right.
I just don't want anybody to get all worked up and start coming up in here thinking we're.
No, no, yeah. So this particular is not a city issue, but it's still close to home. So no one, no one at this diocese made any decisions regarding that, I promise.
Thank you for that.
Of course.
Anyone else who wishes to speak during public participation? No?
Good evening, council staff and Turlock citizens. We know the world conditions are constantly changing. It's just a matter of fact and reality. You can fool the people, but you can't fool the laws of physics and mathematics. The laws of physics and mathematics are the guideline we're governed by. You can't ignore them. Two and two will always be four. In the laws of physics, it states two solid objects cannot occupy the same space at the same time will always always apply. Just today, two jetliners in Chicago came very close to colliding on the runway. We would have had another major disaster. I don't know if you saw that. Here's an outdated and incorrect statement that has recently been made. It was telecommunications is now common. This is false. Government and private industry employees are now being required to return to their offices again. It was the pandemic that forced people to telecommunicate, and the pandemic is over. The residents of Turlock have told us over and over again, they like our small town size. The primary housing we should be focusing on today is our infill areas. Most of it should be high-rise condominiums, multi-story townhouses, and three-to-five-story apartment complexes. In Stanislaus County, housing results in the destruction of the best farmland in the world. We are responsible to see that our children and our descendants have food to eat since they cannot do this for themselves. We certainly don't want our children to suffer because of the bad decisions we make today. Here is something we continually need to be reminded of. We need to treat everyone like we would like them to treat us. Let's make sure that we treat every one of our residents with dignity and respect. One comment on the financing of city projects is that it seems to me like the city is budgeting more money from the cannabis fund than the city is receiving from Cannabis Fund 117. That's not going to work. It's a problem. Remember, there are $5 million of money that's going to the cannabis, from the cannabis funds that are going for the completion of Columbia Pool on the west side. Yet, at a recent meeting, you budgeted another $500,000 in the cannabis fund for 13 camera systems. This sounds like a mistake. Last comment, most of you know that I had a business here in Turlock for over 40 years. And when Circuit Center came in Turlock, it hurt my business. Lucky for me, they went out of business. When Chick-fil-A opens up, it will hurt some of our small businesses. And some may have to close. And that's not good. So there's got to be a happy medium between everything. And thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in public comment? Okay, closing public comment, bringing it back for consent calendar.
Motion.
A motion? And a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abra?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black.
Yes, passes on a 5-0. Final reading, this is the second final reading of the zoning map for the rezoning established for planned development. Bright. I will open it to the public. Any last comments on this? No?
Yes, this is a great project. I'm glad to see it here in Turlock. The bright development is going to be good. We need more developments similar to that, but even more intense, more, again, the high-rise buildings that will take care of growth without intruding on our best farmland in the world. That's always a concern. You can't replace it. We have TID and MID, so we need to get projects like this project, but even more, the the high-rise condos. I don't know why we don't have too many of those. We do have hotels, and we know we can build five-story buildings here in Turlock. So that's what's really going to help us out, so that we don't destroy the best farmland in the world. That's what we have to keep thinking about. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, closing public comment, bringing it back.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abra?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black.
Yes, passes on a 5-0. All right, public hearing. This item was postponed or will be postponed. But since it was put on, we must open it to the public. However, if you ask a question, we will not be able to answer it at this time. So it's regarding a Colorado Health Facilities Authority. Anyone wishing to speak, I'm opening the public, come up.
Okay, I know you can't answer questions, but I looked this up. It's Brandell Manor on on Olive Road. And it actually is talking about Brandell Manor. But we have to look at the fact that we have the covenant, okay, their own, Brandell Manor is not, it's the covenant, I'm sorry, I got a little off here. Covenant Living Connections is the one who wants us to do whatever they're requiring. And we did this previously. I don't know how that worked out, but it was done once before. And I I questioned it then. I didn't understand how come we would be telling that it's okay for them to spend $180 million. But anyway, it seemed like that's what was doing, being done. But if there's anything we can do, we want to get Brandell Manor back. I mean, we lost that. That's a major blow to the city of Turlock. I mean, every one of us knows, even my dad was there, you know, everyone has had friends there. It was a beautiful place, I thought. I don't know what happened to it. But hopefully, we, if we use this here, maybe we can use it as leverage to see that we get Brandell Manor back. I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we're closing public comment, and we'll move that on. It'll be back at a later date, not not recognized today. Item 10A, adopting amendments for fiscal year, Director Moreno. Mid-year review.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Seize. Item for you is our mid-year budget review for the fiscal year 2425. From a fiscal analysis and a presentation standpoint, from my perspective, this is one of the bigger ones you'll get. So you'll have a lot more data coming through this presentation as far as what our sales tax looks like, what our property tax looks like. So you're able to get a true snapshot of what a mid-year looks like. So going into the analysis, we'll talk about multiple things. Obviously, the general fund is going to be the one of the primary topics. We adopted the budget back in June. That date is wrong, unfortunately. Let me go backwards. There we go. As you can see, we're using the presentation as far as notes from the prior one. But we did do a mid-year adjustments, our first quarter adjustments in different formats. A lot of it's really coming down to bargaining units. So you're looking at your budget adopted for the general fund at the beginning of June for this fiscal year was 64.1 million in revenues and 62.4 million in expenditures. As an amended budget, you had 64.1 million and 63.9 million for expenditures. Again, largely due to the bargaining unit increases. So at 50% marker, we'll use that as a kind of a gauge of what it all looks like from the information being pulled in. So you have sales tax and property tax that are estimated because we get to our sales tax two months in arrears and recruit back. Some of that information is pulled in to be able to get pulled in to get a general estimate of what all the information looks like. That's why we do it in in February, so we can get a little cleaner, especially because property tax comes in like January. So large expenditures that are still occurring are actually indicated and put in to the budget to make sure we get a clean overall picture as well. Sales tax, this is going to be our one of our biggest topic for tonight overall. We are seeing a decrease in our per sales, per sales tax projection coming in from our consultant. So at the half marker, we're looking at a decrease in our projected sales tax of just over half a million dollars. Over the future of the projections that the information received, we're looking at a decrease of overall 1.4. How does that overall impact us? So looking at the overall state sales tax, why, we are seeing sales tax down throughout the states. The good thing is, going through the budget process, it's only one of our revenue streams, right? When we look at our revenue streams and our expenditures, we look at the totality of the overall budget. One number is a large indicator for us to watch, but we also have other things that are going on that spit the whole puzzle together. So when we go through the information, we look at our budget again to revenue actuals. So at the, again, 50% marker, from a budget perspective, revenue is 32.0 as a halfway point, and actuals at 32.2. So your actual revenues are on point as far as an overall marker of what overall looks like. And you're also seeing a decrease within our expenditures factor as far as budgets to actuals at 31.9 and 30 million at the actual marker, so 44%. So you're seeing our increase, our revenues actually picking up. And what you're actually seeing a lot is you're seeing interest being actually budget higher, coming in higher than what's actually budgeted, franchise fees that are coming in. So all these different levels of revenue streams that are coming in, we're seeing 1% to 5% increases overall. So that's how we say, we can't just look at one marker, we have to look at the overall. So when you go through the overall factor, you're seeing a net gain of actually $2.1 million. We do expect this number to be decreased through the future years because of sales tax. But I think, given the information that we're looking at and the data analysis that I'm providing, you can see that we can pick those those losses out going forward, especially because we're on track with our overall expenditures, right? So just keeping track with the whole thing overall. So within that, because of where we're at the midpoint, there are also augmentations, but we didn't take a heavy look at the whole thing. We really asked directors kind of give us some, one items that we can pick through and kind of bring forward, with the understanding that we're about to go back into budget cycle. So we're already starting to have the conversations of what budget's going to look like for next year, and starting to have those meetings as we go forward. Moving on to other funds. So you're going to see the Rose Program obviously move forward. We still have the healthy reserve as you see a negative number. That's just because that's how we plan the overall cash flow to go. Public safety, still strong overall. Cannabis, so this obviously is brought up tonight. The factor as far as revenues over expenditures being overspent, we actually came out of it last year with about a million dollars in reserves. And obviously, we're looking to come out of it with less expenditures overall, too. Although we have an allocation of a budget augmentation for just over half a million dollars, you can still see that we're able to pick that up, and we're living with them, our revenues and expenditures coming through. So the remaining funds are larger funds, what we like to call. So your municipal service funds, 410 and 420, really project-driven overall. So that concludes my presentation. Is there any questions?
Wow.
I gave you some good and some bad tonight.
All right. Questions? Okay, we'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Come on up, no?
Okay, I'm going to focus on the cannabis fund because it seems very mysterious to me. So I want to know how we are behind, we're projecting, we're going to have, we're losing money in cannabis. We had several of them that we're losing money in. And I don't understand how that's happening. In other words, we have negative results. Should have made a copy of that. I will do that next time. But anyway, and again, I want to know how come we can, we've got $5 million of funding that needs to be paid with the cannabis fund, $5,500,000 because we have the pool and we also have the the camera system. So how can it pay for that? There just isn't enough money there. Are you, I don't understand how that's being done. It doesn't quite add up to me. And another, this is one other question. So when you say total income from cannabis businesses, what do you mean? So when you say total income from cannabis businesses, what do you mean? What is the total? I mean, are you talking about just the retail businesses? You talking about the growing businesses? You talking about all the businesses? If it's all the businesses, and we're only making $700,000 a year, that sounds low. I still have some time. But anyway, okay. It also listed that we lost $7,723,370 in Fund 115, road funds, Measure A. So in other words, we're behind by $7,723,370. We're in the negative. So we're in negative in three of those, four of those accounts, and that doesn't make sense. So again, I'd like you to explain that. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back for some responses.
Sure, thank you. So cannabis fund was obviously one of the larger topics overall. To go to the $5 million as far as the cannabis pool, those funds were allocated future years. That has nothing to do with expenditures other than this current period of time. So there's no other funds that are going to be allocated. They were taken out of the cannabis fund itself and directly allocated to the project fund itself. So those monies have been moved out. Loss in money, what you're seeing is not a loss in money. When I say we have an estimated $1 million in equity, that means we were coming out of the year positive as far as cash flow and how our equity looks like. Total income coming in overall, we projected during the budget time that our cannabis dollars were going to come down, so we're actually hitting that marker. We saw that coming through the trends overall, but we also did open another one, two as well, right? So you have that ebb and flow going through the year. So again, cannabis itself, the fund is healthy. We're not overextending ourselves in any way. And again, as far as the income losses coming through, not necessarily loss, we projected that it was going to taper down, and we seem to be on track.
The cannabis businesses include just the...
Right now, they're only dispensaries.
No gross?
No.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then the money towards the roads is...
Money to the roads. So when we talked about it in the presentation, we talked about that you had that negative number, but we've also built up large reserves to be able to take on those numbers. So when I did the look at the analysis overall at that point in time, we still had about $4 million in equity within that fund, right? So we are planning for that to be doing that because that's how we use our money. We're going to stack it up, we're going to bring it down, we're going to ebb and flow through the whole time. That's why you issue debt, that's why you use other funds. Some of the items you saw tonight are going to be for Measure L, not for Measure A. We're now allocating those across the board.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, so Isaac, just so my people don't panic that don't speak finance, nobody's taking money out of my cannabis fund for my Columbia pool funds, correct?
That's correct. It's already been allocated.
And Measure A is not $7.723 million in the hole.
It is not. Is it a large capital project running through there?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes 5-0. Thank you, Director Moreno. All right, the finale. Mr. Possage, are you ready, sir?
He's always ready.
Bring it.
Road Doctor, you should call him by his proper name.
My bad.
He is the Road Doctor.
It's not what his ID says.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Item before you is another word of bid. A little background here, you have seen it before, but I'm just going through these slides. Almost exactly a year ago, the council approved three design task orders. These are all the streets shown in orange for a total of 12.8 miles. The first task order was for Mark Thomas for 5.2 miles. Again, the streets are shown here in orange. And we decided to develop three bid packages. Same thing for the next task order for Provo and Pritchett, total of five miles. We decided on three bid packages. The last task order, one bid package for a total of 2.6 miles, so a total of seven bid packages. And the purpose is very simple, break it up into manageable chunks, so as we go through construction, we can spread the projects around the city and see if we can avoid congestion and impacting too many businesses and people in one area. Gives us a lot more flexibility if we have more bid packages, and it helps us attract more competitive bids if projects are a little bit smaller. More contractors are capable of bidding and bonding for those projects. The first bid package to be ready, that was awarded two weeks ago by the council, it's for, basically for Donnelly Park area, and I'm happy to inform you that we had our pre-construction meeting last week, and the contractor is ready to go with the good weather by March 10. They're expected to be out there starting to work, and based on 60 working days, the last day of work is expected to be first week of June, again, weather permitting, and hopefully, we don't hit anything underground that we didn't expect. You never know with construction. You never know what you're going to dig up. So very optimistic that this project is going to be wrapped up quickly. These are the streets in the Donnelly Park area. The second bid package to be ready is the one before you. It's for Andre Lane area. And these are the streets for just about 1.4 miles. We advertised the project for bids on January 15, and we'll be open three bids on February 13. And this is what's in the staff report, listing of the contractors and the bid amounts. United Pavement Maintenance was the lowest responsible responsive bidder, and their bid was $700,000 under the engineer's estimate. So what we have before you tonight is a resolution to determine that the award of bid is exempt from SEQA, award the bid, and approve a contract with United Pavement Maintenance, Inc., for the bid amount, and we are also asking for a 10% contingency in the amount of $322,000. Any questions?
Questions?
Just real quick. So the contingency that you're asking for, for 10%, is that for change orders?
Yes, unexpected.
Unexpected?
Yes.
And so are there, is there any other amount built in for change orders? I'm asking because when you see a bid come in $715,000 below the other bids, it raises my eyebrows, and we've been killed on change orders in the past.
Absolutely. We are not that easy to approve when it comes to approving change orders.
I know you're not, but I just want you to tell the public.
Yes. So engineer's estimate is 3.9.
Okay.
But as you can see, all bids came under, and they are very competitive. The first and the second are only off by $250,000. Yes, we always have to have a 10% contingency in there. You never know what you're going to hit underground and what issues are going to come up. That gives you a cushion, and it helps us from having to come to the council every time and delaying the project in the process as the contractor waits for approval of a change order. Our process of approving the change order is extremely, extremely detailed, and we have our CM consultant on site. We also oversee all of the activities in there, so rest assured, nothing goes through us without checks and balances.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, we'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Anyone not wanting roads to be done? Anybody? Anybody? All right, close public comment and bring it back.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have two motions, three seconds. Will you call the roll?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes. 5-0. Thank you, Road Doctor.
Thank you, sir, for being on top of it.
All right. City manager reports are listed on the agenda. The I-Rate 10. Councilmember comments and announcements, and if we could ever get future consideration all at once, thank you. Anybody? We'd like to. Just make it all, just like...
None of them.
Nothing? Nothing? Yeah?
I want to, you, you made a passing comment at the end of last meeting that got my attention or just about pooping or getting off the pot with regard to fire.
Sure.
I'm assuming you're talking about the management contract versus, or what were you talking about with that?
George, am I okay to answer?
You can give a brief answer.
Yes. No, I'm just kidding. Yes, whether or not, you know, the union's interested and if we need to know what the numbers are so we can make our decisions, because we just had our mid-year, right?
I guess what I would like is, since I wasn't around or part of how we ended up where we are today, to have some history to be able to look at and see how we've evolved and what that's done, good, bad, or indifferently, rather than just have numbers presented to us to...
I think that Mr. Moreno and Mr. Wilson are both working on like a 10-year lookback so we'll see what we've done in the past, what has happened now with what our management agreement is, if I'm correct. So they'll present it to us, but I still want the union to, you know, speak up and say something. Anything else? We had the Air Force here the other day, and they gave us a certificate of appreciation. They use our chambers on occasion, so they wanted to thank us, so that was kind of cool. They did flyby. That's why we had, it messed up the flags. Close session. Madam Clerk?
We have 14A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, California Government Code 54957B1, title City Manager. 14B, Conference with Labor Negotiations, California Government Code 54957.6A, Agency Designated Representative, City Manager Reagan Wilson, Employee Organization Turlock Firefighter Association Local 2434. C, Conference with Labor Negotiations, California Government Code 54957.6A, Agency Designated Representative, Mayor Amy Boobla, Unrepresented Employee, City Manager, Deputy City Manager, and Police Chief.
All right, we will report out should there be anything. Thank you so much, and drive safe. All right, we will report out should there be anything. Thank you so much and drive safe.
All right, we are back and we have nothing to report out on and have a good night.